And Chairman, we're live.
All right, welcome back. Next up is our nine thirty beanie on December first.
Good morning, Commissioners. Let me just grab this here and separate it. So we have a couple of grants on the, on the docket here and Doug and the clerk and I did sit down and confirm match amounts for these ones. So unlike the Sampson Trail grant that I pulled, these ones, the, the matches are identified. So I feel confident that we can go ahead and move forward with these that were awarded. So, let's see here. Yes, this is the TAP grant for Lake Shore Drive Shared Pathway, West Mountain to Duffers.
So moved that we TAP grant for Lake Shore Drive?
Second.
It moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looking to see if it's a five hundred and forty-five thousand? That's on the grid. The Lake Shore's one's less. Oh, no, you're correct, sorry.
Let me go back to the
Three, four percent, forty thousand, eighteen dollars. Oh, oh.
That, that's correct, Catlin.
Five, five hundred and forty-five, okay.
Yeah, so I should've stated that and I'll state it on the next item on the agenda, but the sponsors, sponsors matches, the forty thousand, eighteen dollars.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Just seven, seven point three four percent.
Pretty cheap for a road. Yeah, exactly.
I asked you to get more sign here, so you get confetti this morning? And that, so in the, should I be filling that out?
No.
Or you fill it out?
Just the dates. I'm not gonna fill out all the dates and everything, but. Yeah.
Enjoying your job so far?
Put in your
Been reading all your stuff and like, oh, she's getting after it.
Yeah, I think fast.
Yeah.
Serious, but now I'm, I'm feeling more normal, less adrenaline.
So who is the assigned contact on this?
For
Does it mean an authorized representative to act on the sponsor's behalf? So is that Ken? So that they contact him? Is that
That would be me then.
Okay.
I think anything that has this any considerable admin associated, associated with it should always be the director.
Best question, and Ken's going, oh! I tried.
Typically authorized representatives are those that can sign checks and approve monies and things like that. So I can help facilitate communications and documentation paperwork. The assignment of the checks is somebody without authority.
So signing the checks with someone without authority, that means me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh. Clarify that, will you, just so I don't get a phone call and I have to figure all that out?
Yes, I will, because depending on the dollar amounts, we might be able to, well, I'll look into that, I guess. Okay, thank you. So
Is the Lake, Lakeform Bridge?
It's supposed to be Lake Fork.
Okay.
It's just a typo. So Lake Fork Creek Bridge Rehab. And again, the clerk and I went through matching and confirmed that that, that was properly accounted for in budget. So the sponsors match for this project will be provided in the amount of, it's seven point three four percent also, so, which is an estimate of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and eight dollars. This is a large project. The total estimated project cost is three point five million. Split up into, so project development, which is still engineering and and pre-construction amounts is seven hundred and twenty thousand, construction of two points, approximately two point two million. Construction engineering, six hundred and eleven thousand.
So is that the lake, is that the LTAC from the bridge to the highway? Or is it actually a bridge?
Good question. This is one of the ones from before my time. If I can find which summary.
See, and that's the only project that no LTAC had. Do in twenty
I'll have to call on Ken here, who actually did the paperwork.
I can refer back to the application, but I believe it was just for the bridge rehab itself.
I don't know which bridges they're talking about, so it must be out on West Lake Fork somewhere.
I haven't heard of that one. For the application.
Haven't heard of that one.
Yeah, main one when you turn off on East Lake Fork. Lake Fork Creek isn't?
Yeah.
What's that bridge?
That bridge.
That's a new bridge. I can't
Or, I think with the project between the bridge and the road, it's gotta widen that bridge.
They're not widening the bridge. They're widening the road. Road's very narrow. The whole, the whole, the whole road from Hardin Market all the way to the bridge and including the bridge, nice shoulders wide, the bridge is wide. As soon as you leave that bridge going to the highway, it just goes like this because of that drop off through there, both sides.
So on our Highway fifty-five project, beginning twenty twenty-six, the East Lake Fork Road to State Highway fifty-five project will commence. This is a rehabilitation project. And that's an ITIP grant.
We'll need a little more clarification on that one.
Should've told Jeff to stay.
And will you put this one off until next week? Does this need signed this week?
I do believe that they hoping to get it back. Let me ask you this, being new, can I get that information and we can revisit this on today's agenda or is that not allowed?
Yeah, that's fine. We can do that. Can we just approve it so we don't risk the award?
Sure.
And then if
And then just clarify.
Rehaul it?
Or? And then clarify it further.
Yeah, I would, because there's and, and going through these items with, with Jeff McFadden as well, it's, you know, we have to remember there's multiple things that are called a bridge and on that stretch of road, if there's like earthen bridges. So I need to confirm exactly which location this is and what the work is, but I'm sure if there's a brand new bridge, we're not proposing to redo that. It's to remediate something, it's an issue that we have. So I just need to confirm exactly what that is, so.
Well, I know that in this project, this is where they needed to buy the weldings. So they're touching that bridge somehow.
Exactly, yeah. And that, that's, that's can be a very expensive item to address if you're trying to touch weldings.
I would entertain a motion to approve. And then we'll receive further clarity.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we through the Lake Fork Bridge Rehabilitation Grant. For two hundred and sixty-two thousand?
That's our
That's our part.
That's our part. It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would you like me to bring the summary later today then?
Yeah, you should have something.
Just email us.
That should say precisely what
Yeah, I
This project entails.
I have a summary that I can
Abstine Bridge hits our agenda again.
I know.
Made a mess. Need staples. You got it cold?
Especially running out. It's cold in my office.
Probably it. An old bit.
Yeah, I don't, I, it's got a big heater, but doesn't really keep temperatures up like so. I'd rather have it cold than a million degrees and have everyone sweating in my office.
Next, the Abstine Bridge letter requirement.
Okay. See if I can say this correctly here. So because of the anticipated overage amount of approximately seven hundred thousand dollars and some additional amount. The we need to provide commitment of additional matching funds that were, that are to some degree identified in letter form. So the source of the funds needs to be addressed and approved for signature here. So the, let's see, the transfer of funds from the profile brid, bridge project in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars and then the remaining approximate three hundred thousand dollars, which would come from the roads general fund is what we've identified. So I have let's see, there's a Valley County contract routing approval cover sheet and an amendment to financial assistance award plus an additional letter for approval and signature here.
This is really just a I would move that we approve the chairman to sign the Abstine Bridge Letter Requirement stating detail on additional funds.
Second.
It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye. So that seven hundred and fifty thousand you have that I'm reading here?
The, so four hundred thousand would come from the Profile Bridge Project.
Mm-hmm.
And then the remaining three hundred thousand, we can identify from our roads general fund. That's maybe not the correct way to state it, but
Yeah, that
Or carryover.
It shows you needing seven hundred and fifty, but you're saying you got seven hundred thousand.
That, it's seven hundred and fifty is the actual amount.
Right.
Right? Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
To be able to pay the RITUS contractor to do that.
Right, so that's four hundred thousand from the Profile Bridge and three hundred and fifty thousand from the, the roads, the roads fund.
Okay.
Okay. So there's a signature official there. This doesn't require a signature.
There's usually no letter.
This, well, here's, here's the letter, but I need to retype that. I need to type that in.
Send that to me and I'll sign it and shoot it back to you.
Don't want to read this letter?
I think we actually received the letter. I know we did.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the, the letter, the commitment of additional matching funds from us will specify that amount. This letter actually says per amendment number two, eight hundred and fifty thousand was added to the grant award for construction costs and Valley County committed to match two hundred and fifty thousand. RITUS contract bid is one point eight. Exceeding the total funding, Valley County commits. Okay, I'll provide that in follow-up.
And last is the approve the change order from Straut General for snow guard rail.
And I'm correct. So there, this is a pretty nominal amount in terms of the total construction contract amount, I think it's. And it covers a, I think it was a handful, four or five minor items, five.
I think four of the snow guard rails and then one additional item.
There was cleats on top of the roof, I believe.
Yeah, that's the snow guards for, because it's a metal roof, so it's snow slat.
There's a percolation test, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. There was a water truck. Some saw cutting. Removing of existing concrete footer for roof drain. An electric door strike. Additional garage door hardware.
These, these items are all kind of traditional unforeseen in construction. Some of it was like buried things that were encountered during excavation and a conflict in, you know, the garage door height where it was hitting HVAC or lock that was omitted from the plant set, that kind of thing, so.
It's a, it's a grand total, Madam Chairman, Commissioners of fifteen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and fifty-five cents. All of the items are identified right at the top of that. So my apologies.
I'm glad they're dealing with the snail, snow rails now.
Yep, they're gonna have snow pretty soon.
Right, do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I just need to disclose the conflict that there is a family member under contract on this. However, due to Idaho's Code of Ethics, I do not have to recuse myself.
I'll make a motion that we approve the change order for the Straut General for snow guards.
No, it's for
The whole, yeah, what do you want to call it?
It's the net increase in the contract amount?
Net increase.
Fifteen thousand, five forty, fifty-five.
Yep.
It moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Print that off and bring it up and then I will, I'll be responsible for submitting that to our, make sure to provide to Straut General. And then we'll get that paid next claims period.
You got it made up right now?
If, if you can bring it right now, that'd be fantastic.
Start page.
I guess, just lastly on the, on the shop construction, I did, I've done several walkthroughs to get up to speed with that so that we can get kind of a wholesale understanding of any remaining items or forgotten items. I did a walkthrough with IT to make sure we're covered there. Did a, I've been talking to Terry to make sure that I understand what, you know, how we're gonna interface. We went through keying and access and made sure that keys, additional keys will be provided to building and ground. So I'm, I'm doing a deep dive to make sure that whatever is left over or was forgotten or, you know.
Are we keying that building?
You're not just badge, badge access. So yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, so I'll, I'm taking
Yeah, once Straut is hundred percent walked away, signed off, then Terry owns it.
Yeah.
We did. You worked so hard on that, that's got your name on it.
Not for, concerned to her. She, she, she's taken ownership all the time.
Yeah, there, one thing I explained to Commissioner, the amount of space for electrical. Electrical and HVAC and then steel posts basically, that takes, that the wall takes up. There's a considerable amount of space that's unusable because you can't put stuff in front of these large electrical panels. And also the HVAC system is large because it's a large shop, so that sticks off the wall two feet by two feet. So accounting for that lost kind of floor space is something that I'm gonna get a handle on soon here. Like this month, I'm focusing on all of that and how we're gonna, how we're gonna get moved in there.
All you have to do is leave three feet in front of electrical equipment.
Yeah, but some of our stuff we can't, we can't, it's heavy, you know, like welding things that were anticipated to be here or there can't be easily moved, so. We'll, we'll, we'll sort it out as best we can and I've got some solutions that we can, we can put in place. So yeah, we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. Thank you.
Anything else?
I think that's all.
Perfect. All right, up next is our discussion and our decision on the directors reporting once a month. This has come up now that we have people all over the county. Here, we really want them taking time out of their work schedules to come and report every other week when they can probably do it once a month. And on our agenda in between if if there's something that they need to address.
I'm proud of that. You know, if they have something pertinent that comes up, yeah, they show up. You know, but if they don't that's, like in that, a lot of times she's busy doing inspections and it's business as usual. Unless something really comes up that says, hey, I need your guys' input. That'll see reason for them to show up the other week.
I think it's important we hear from them so we know what those departments are doing. This is our one chance for all three of us to hear from the directors. I mean, we hear from our individual ones when there's problem, but I do think it's important that we hear from them. It's just a month is probably enough.
I think so too. And I think we should keep a, a consistent date, like the first commissioner meeting of every month.
That'll work.
So, so that they know for sure. We know, there's no confusion of moving it around.
Mm-hmm.
And Doug, maybe we could put out a meeting invite so that it's on their calendars. I think that might be helpful.
As long as our commissioner meetings are the first Monday of each month.
We normally don't miss the first Monday. Holidays are normally in the I guess it would be if I, well, even at Christmas wouldn't be the first Monday. Maybe the first of January?
Well, it's, and even if it's the first Monday, we, if that's a holiday, we meet on the Tuesday. So they would just come on that first meeting of the month, whatever meeting of the month, yeah.
Works.
I'll entertain a motion then, and I will send out an email.
I would move that we move to having the directors report once a month at the first commissioner meeting of, of every month.
Second.
It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
We'll just send out an email from all of us to that. Looks like, you know what, let's just do the ten o'clock because then we've got a big break until the eleven o'clock.
Oh.
For you to get here to see what you think, so. Let me give a little bit of background on this. We gave the ten thousand dollars to the Economic Development Council to put forward or to work on the resource management. And what those, what those funds are for is data gathering. We were gonna do community meetings. Start working on our resource management plan. Well, this BSU study that has come up has the community meetings and the funding has ran out with BSU. So we have two more meetings that the community would like to hold. And so what I'm asking is to use some of those funds that the EDC holds in order to pay for the BSU meetings that we're having.
That's a who holds?
The Economic Development Council. I gave them ten thousand year, two years ago and ordered, there was three buckets that we put that in.
And then we just gave that Brittany Brand lady the BSU thing, doesn't? Is that right?
No, that's for the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Yeah.
But that's why I think doing these meetings with BSU is helpful because they're, it's kind of all integrated. I mean, that All-Hazard Mitigation Plan is also about emergency services, basically. The Resource Management Plan, ten thousand's not gonna pay for a Resource Management Plan. I'm hoping that we get the data that we need in order to write a plan and then I'd really like to talk to BSU. Catlin would like to maybe hire another firm to write that plan. But it's not gonna do it anyway, but just trying to get a couple more meetings to discuss mainly the infrastructure stuff. There's a lot of conversation. We had a large group on the infrastructure that they'd like to hold two more meetings on. So it's gonna be probably five thousand by the time that we get everything wrapped up on the BSU study.
And run me up to speed on what's this study going to accomplish? That's where I like to see, you, you know me, I like to see something practical comes out of.
Oh, at the end?
That's where I'm kinda stuck.
At the end of this study, there will be graduate students. She already has graduate students that are ready and willing to help us rewrite some ordinance or proposed ordinance changes in order to address, some of it has been water quality. You know, we're working on the water quality and the comp plan, but we need to update our ordinances around water quality and the things that we're gonna require. So there will be graduate students at the end of the day on items that we've actually identified through this study that needs to be improved upon in Valley County. And so they'll, they will be there to help and assist us move this project forward and actually put implementation on the ground. So it's not gonna be a study that sits on the shelves. And there is another meeting on the eighteenth of December and they would really now they can't, she's got other meetings. They'd really like to have more from us there so that you do understand what it is. We've been talking about a lot of education that needs to happen in the community. There's a large call for more public relations so that people understand what the county's currently doing. But there's also if I can probably pull up I don't know if I have it right in front of me or not, what all the topics are. I've done two summits now. Managed Growth, Natural Stewardship and Shared Prosperity is the goals. So we've just done a lot of strategic planning around that. There's a lot of conversation around the rapid development in the region, you know, the impact of the groundwater, surface water.
I was reading some of that somewhere.
So they are proposing smart growth, goals. Some online, some specific strategies in order to accomplish that. There's talking a lot about the hazard resiliency, talks a lot about the wild, wildland fire resilience. It's talking
So what was, what was your take on it?
So we, I know they're just kind of separate, but still integrating. We've paid Boise State sixty-five thousand to do a hazard resource, you know, hazard mitigation plan. And I think a lot of what they're covering under these is part of that. They're talking about wildfire and wildfire impacts. Well, that should be under the hazard mitigation plan. I just worry about putting a lot of county dollars into one group who maybe I don't align with their principles. In going through their websites, almost every professor that's on there refers to climate change. So I would like to see a resource management plan done, especially because we're ninety-seven percent public lands that are for us done separately. So my concerns were just pooling all this money into one entity that may or may not align with how I see the future of the county.
Right.
So we're already into this. They've already spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this project on our behalf. And they're just out of money at the very end in order to wrap some of this stuff up. I really wanna see their doctorate program. I wanna see those individuals come in and help us implement some of these strategies and goals, so. And where we're at.
When do we get to ten thousand, bro?
It's already sitting there. We've already identified it. It's already been given to the Economic Development Council. It's in their hands. So technically, we didn't put parameters inside boards around it. We just said, go do the resource management plan. That board agreed that this is within that scope of work. However, Senda really wanted me to come back to you guys and ask if you guys think that this is within that scope of work, so that's what I'm doing.
Is it multi-years of giving ten thousand or just one ten thousand?
This one. Yeah, I mean, we are gonna have to identify how to do a resource management plan. That's not gonna pay for a resource management plan. So we're gonna have to figure out how to do that if I have to write it myself before I leave. I'm committed to that, but hopefully we can we've already identified a portion of that and we'll have to start it.
So if, so we've already appropriated the, the ten thousand?
Yes.
So why would
Some of those funds to finish this project without it creating that resource for something and allowing them to use it for something else.
Right.
Well, I would argue that this is in support of the resource management plan. The data gathering, it's community conversations that have happened, so whether we wanna use that or not, but there's nothing other funding source out there, so either those funds or we're probably just gonna be done with this.
Well, if we didn't Well, if we didn't. I mean, those funds are already being allocated. Who's using them?
They're sitting there waiting for us to do community work. I mean, those, those funds will be for. Community meetings, much like we're doing right now. The topic might be broader because we do need to do the, um. The resource management plan identifies how we want our natural resources managed. So this is a subset of that because it's around water and water quality. And so this conversation will empower the resource management plan and the waters, uh, section of it. Planning that we're doing for the future. I think that'll take five thousand of it. In order to complete, this is actually for, it's not for BSU, it's for the lady that actually is coordinating these meetings and doing these meetings. In order to have her come and do it. Party.
There's a meeting here with us. I mean, what kind of meeting, you're talking about just community meeting or what?
Well, we've been meeting now, I mean, it's, this two hundred fifty thousand dollar project is paid for. Uh, two years worth of planning sessions.
And that was a grant?
That was a BSU grant, they got a FEMA grant, um. A lot of natural resource planning, hazard mitigation planning. They actually have done this for the community of Camey, and they came out with a full plan and implemented it with their graduate. So in that community, they were concerned about flooding in their downtown core, so they moved a creek, moved a whole creek, and created and brought that community out of the flood plain. And that's kind of what this does, it identifies the hazards that are surrounding our communities. In the natural resource well. They will come up with identified. Projects in order to implement as we move forward. They're working on the all hazard mitigation plan with lawn, they're the ones that did our. The, the website. That is the. All hazards website. So, I mean, they've just been working with our community now for two years, three years, doing a lot of different things. I understand your concern, however. I think climate change is a, is a hot button word, I've asked everyone not to use it, I think it's. I think it divides us and I don't think it brings us together, but I think that this group most definitely has identified areas. Where we have common concern. And that's really empowered one of the conversations around the comp plan today. And the water improvements, the, that type of thing that the county's got. This has really helped inform that decision, these community meetings, so. I, I would just like to see us complete this project and put some implementation in place and not. Stop the progress that we've made over the last two years.
Yeah, what I'd like to see is more, um, having to do with, um, natural resources, I mean, they're keying in on water. You know, and everybody can key in on their own parts and pieces, you know, for me, it's like. I see all these fire, you know, the big fires that we get. And now there's no vegetation out there to hold it, it starts runoff, that's heading to the lake. And it's gonna be bad. And we've seen that, we've seen it take out roads, we've seen it take out all kinds of stuff. That four corners fire, that was a mess.
And I don't know what the mitigation strategies are at this point, cause we're not there yet, I wanna see if there was anything.
I don't see money used for that than. Water quality, we get so many studies on water quality, it's, oh my goodness.
Well, we don't.
And they, they're trying to save Cascade Reservoir, that's. Can't save Cascade Reservoir. Do our best to help it out, but.
Okay. And that's why I would just love to have you come so that you can actually. Sit and listen to what we're doing, um.
I can appreciate you wanting to finish the project, and I'm not gonna stand in your way of finishing this project, you've put a lot of time into it, and so if, if, if this is what you feel we need to do. But I do think we need to be careful moving forward of putting all of our dollars into one. Entity, um, I think actually a lot of our water quality stuff came from a more local source like Valley Soil and Water and friends of, friends of Lake Cascade, so. I'm. I won't vote no on this to stop the, the final, finalizing this project. But I am gonna put out there that I do have concerns of Boise State doing all of our plans.
Yeah, cause we, uh, and I agree with you on that because we, uh. I always believe that people that know the most are the ones. That are impacted the most. Like, like you said, Southwest Soil and Water. And Lake Cascade, and you know, they live here, they know what's going on around these lakes. And, uh.
But.
That's the ones I trust.
So I will give you feedback on that. I think that sometimes people also have personal agendas.
Oh, sure.
And so I want somebody that's outside that sphere and outside that system.
Mm-hmm.
In order to bring data, I'm data driven, and I think BSU has a fabulous. Um, center for, it's a resiliency center to make communities more resilient. And that resiliency can be from an economic downturn, how do you support your business communities? To make sure that you have sustainable, uh, and a sustainable economy in the future, I think it can be. Natural hazard mitigation that you're working on, um. I think, you know, part of this conversation is who's gonna have what type of infrastructure for growth in the future. We've had a lot of input and conversation with Cascade and with, well, Donnelly doesn't communicate with McCall on infrastructure needs. And so there, it's a full conversation about how we are sustainable moving forward. And I think that that as community leaders is something that we should be focused on and driving towards, so. I'm just trying to look at some of the. The goals for you. Mountains Region will adopt and implement policies and systems that support existing and future capacity needs, so some of the strategies. Foster collaboration between entities. Identify planning enforcement strategies that prevent scattered or mismatched growth. Identify multi-agency projects, develop combined public messaging for projects, bonds, levies, fundings. Identify funding sources. Two, the stewardship. By twenty twenty-eight, the West Central Mountains Region will have effective systems and practices to improve and conserve natural ecosystem health. Leading to equitable and safe access for all users, some of the strategies. Establish environmental baselines, water and air, identify stakeholders to advocate for land use planning. Convene structure in, in, convene structure, including all stakeholders to identify causes of risks and solutions. Identify a decision-making framework, risk assessment of rec development and environmental conservation. Education and outreach on shared responsibility, environmental risk and sensitivity. All three.
So on this piece, I mean, you know, if we approve, you know, reallocating that ten thousand that's in there to this. What assurance do you have that, that'll complete it? What they're wanting to get done? From them.
So all that we have left, uh, I mean, we're identifying these strategies, the engagement, the only thing we have left is a meeting, two meetings. In order to complete the strategies and put the implement. And a lot of this is again looking at, do these, this is the information that's come from the public, from all of the public engagement, from all of the summits. That they've had and from these other meetings. And so now taking all of that community information and creating strategies around it and. Uh, recommending ordinance changes needed.
Okay.
I know that. It may seem that a university doesn't have their own agendas, but I have always found that they do. I think some of their goals have underlying concerns for me as a agricultural producer and as a long time native of the county. Uh, but like I said, I'm not gonna vote no just to, because I wouldn't want someone to do that to me to not be able to finish out a project, but I do have concerns.
I'll make a motion that we, uh. Always say reallocate the funds to complete the work. The Boise State University community meetings.